... by filing a notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the Newark Star-Ledger on December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on public access channel twenty-one at seven P.M. Sundays and Wednesdays and are also available for viewing at www dot Parsippany dot net. Would you all join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands united, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi. Okay, let's try this again. Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. DePiro.
Here.
Also in attendance are Business Administrator Fred Carr, Mayor James Barberio, Township Attorney Michael Lavery, Township Clerk Collette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, November first, two thousand and twenty-two at seven P.M. Agenda meeting, eleven-twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven P.M., our regular meeting. Approval of minutes?
Agenda meeting nine-six-twenty-two, regular meeting nine-two thousand and twenty-two. Motion to approve the minutes above by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Presentations and reports, mayor?
You said presentation?
Reports.
Oh, no, I haven't, I'm sorry, no, I have no report as of, as of right now. I will hold my, I will reserve my time to speak after the ordinance that we vote on tonight.
Okay, thank you. Township council?
Yes. I'm the liaison to the Parsippany Daycare Center, and if you've gone by Bevillik, Baldwin Road, you will notice a new playground has been installed. It's New Jersey Jets Play Sixteen, Sixty Fitness Zone. The project cost ninety thousand dollars. Seventy-five thousand was given by the Jets, and the remainder was paid by the daycare center. It's a, the equipment is for children two to five, and I think if you go by there, you'll see the different equipment that is there, and I believe the children will be enjoying that for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Grignani. Township attorney, any report?
No report, council president.
Thank you. Business administrator?
Yes, sir.
Township clerk?
No report at this time, council president, thank you.
Township offices and committees? Engineering report?
All right, this thing shot, so.
What do you mean?
All right, engineering report. Green Bank Road Safety Improvements Project, the adjustments to the stream bed has been made, a new gargoyle will be installed by the end of September. Project closeout will be completed by the end of October, no council action required. Two thousand and twenty-one, road resurfacing curb and sidewalk program, the annual road resurfacing curb and sidewalk project is on hold, pending negotiations with the contractor. No council action required. Putting Stone Heights Road Improvement Project, Phase One, construction of the Putting Stone Heights Improvement Project is substantially complete. We anticipate all remaining punch items list to be completed in the next several weeks, no council action required. Rockaway River Flood Wall, levee inspection, our consultant is working on preparing design details and a cost estimate for the maintenance and repair work to the flood wall and levee. All vegetation within five feet of the wall and tow slope have been cleared in accordance with our inspection requirements, no council action required. Traffic signal maintenance for Littleton Road and Rita Drive, Beechwood Road, and the Jefferson Road and Smith Road intersections. This project is for improvements and maintenance of the traffic signals located in Littleton Road and Rita Drive, Beechwood Road intersection, and the Jefferson Road and Smith Road intersection. The improvements include the replacement of various signal detection and controller equipment that have failed. Work will begin once equipment is available, no council action required. Two thousand and twenty-two, road resurfacing curb and sidewalk program, the two thousand and twenty-two road resurfacing curb and sidewalk project is approximately substantially complete. All work is anticipated to be complete by the end of October, no council action required. North Beverick Road Streetscape Project Phase One, the fa, first phase of the North Beverick Road Streetscape Project is in design. We anticipate bidding this project over the winter, no council action required. Drummond Drive Stream Cleaning, the NJDEP permits have been issued for this project. Our consultant is finishing the design, and we intend to bid this project over the winter, no council action required. Jefferson Road Improvements, we received a seven-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar NJDOT grant for improvements to Jefferson Road, from Parsippany Road to Smith Road. The improvements include the resurfacing of the roadway, minor intersections upgraded, significant drainage improvements, particularly near the East Halsey Road intersection. Plans are in design, and the project will be bid once NJDEP permits have been issued, no council action required. Mount Tabor Street Improvements, Phase Seven, the Mount Tabor Street Improvements, Phase Seven Project is in design, we anticipate bidding this project once funding is available, no council action required. Lake Intervale Area Street Improvements, the first phase of the Lake Intervale Area Street Improvement Project is in design, we anticipate bidding this project when funding is available, no council action required. Roadway Design Projects, the following projects are in design and proposals have been requested. Troy Brook Stream Cleaning, Sylvan Way Sidewalk Improvements, River and Stream Desnagging Plans and Permit, Etten Road Traffic Study, Sylvan Way Culvert Improvements, no council action required.
Thank you, Mr. Karifi. This is off now.
Hello?
I guess we're down to one mic? I did. It was on before.
No, the mics, hello?
Hello?
Can we get AV down here, please?
Okay, we'll keep trying.
It's not, you can't, because it's being recorded, and we need the recording.
Mine's working, but I have to speak up. Okay.
It's not on.
This one's not on?
It's on, can you hear it?
Hold on. Hello? Hello?
Now's it working?
Yeah.
Hello? Okay. You guys can hear me out there?
Yeah, but this one.
Okay. Test.
It's working.
It's working. Yeah, they're working. They're working now.
Is this one working?
Yeah, it's working.
Okay, you can have that one back.
Thank you, AV.
It's like a comedy here tonight. Who's on first?
Yankees are winning.
Bid's taken. Ten-six-twenty-two, will one A replacement? Bid's to be taken. Ten-twenty-six-twenty. Come on, guys.
There you go. All right, they put the volume up.
All right, we'll try it again. Bid's taken, ten-six-twenty-two, will one A replacement? Bid's to be taken, ten-twenty-six-twenty-two, media replacement program Phase One. Now I will entertain a motion to open this meeting to the public.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Okay, so the floor is open to the public to speak on any matter, you're going to have three minutes. For those people who are speaking on the PLA ordinance, there will be a portion in the ordinance where there's a public hearing. You can either choose to speak during this portion or on the public hearing on the actual ordinance. I just want you guys to make note of that. All right, go ahead. Sir, could you state your name and address, please? Is the mic working? You guys can hear him back there?
No.
Hold on before you start, please.
Flip the switch on the mic.
There's a button on the side there.
About where your thumb is.
Where your thumb is.
My name is Peter Friedrich.
On the side where your thumb is?
I don't know.
Up top, up top.
Hello?
Woo!
My name, my name is Peter Friedrich. In August, when Edison Town Council President Joseph Coyle participated in the India Day Parade, he had no idea what the bulldozer in the parade symbolized until shocked locals explained why they were so disturbed by it. Once Coyle learned, he did the honorable thing. If he had not known about the bulldozer, he said he would not have participated and would have left the event. After all, in India today, the bulldozer has become a symbol of hate. It symbolizes the ruling party's oppression of religious minorities, especially Muslims. As The New York Times explains, "To those who understood its symbolism, it was a blunt and sinister taunt, later likened to a noose or a burning cross at a KKK rally." At the parade, the bulldozer was led by a delegation of the OFBJP, which serves as the American wing of India's ruling party, the BJP. Before recently registering as a foreign agent in America, the OFBJP was a nonprofit registered right here in America. At the parade, marching a short ways behind the bulldozer was a contingent of the HSS, a national nonprofit headquartered right here in New Jersey. The HSS serves as the American wing of the RSS, a fascist paramilitary which actually created the BJP, India's ruling party. Here in America, leaders and members of HSS have a long history of partisan collaboration with the OFBJP to put and keep the BJP in power in India. Of course, the HSS doesn't like to advertise its connection with the RSS, that fascist paramilitary in India, or its interlinkages with the OFBJP here in America. Instead, the HSS prefers soliciting praise from American elected officials to help legitimize itself and thus gain access to the halls of power. That's exactly what happened here in Parsippany in January of this year, when this town issued a proclamation praising the HSS. In Edison, the council president didn't realize that the bulldozer is a symbol of hate in India, but when he learned, he regretted even participating in the parade. Now, I'm sure that Parsippany Township didn't realize that the HSS here in New Jersey is the international wing, the New Jersey wing of a fascist paramilitary back in India, but now that you do know that.
Thirty seconds, sir.
When will you take back the proclamation you passed praising the HSS? Because when you do, you will do as big of a boon to the currently oppressed, persecuted, and bloodied religious minorities of India as Edison did when it regretted its participation in that India Day Parade because of the presence of the bulldozer and denounced that bulldozer. Please take back that HSS proclamation. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Herman Starr, Desake, New Jersey, oh-seven-oh-five-five, Local Three Labor. All I want to say is about the PLA, you can't get a better workforce this side of the Mississippi River besides the guys you got in front of you right now. All we want is a fair-paid job, and that's what we're here for. Thank you, and I appreciate you.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jonas Parvez. I'm from Randolph, which is the neighboring town. I'm here to inform you of a recent hate speech made by one of residents of Parsippany. On twentieth September, a guy named Vivek from Parsippany traveled to Teaneck and made vicious hateful statements about Muslims all over the world in the council meeting, in presence of the public. I want to read some statements he made in the council meeting to you. When the things happened over here for nine-eleven in New York, you know who cried? It was the Hindus who cried with the Americans. You know who enjoyed? People still want to name a reward in India after Osama bin Laden. That was false, by the way. You talk about any rape in the country. This is happening by all the Muslims over there. Fifty-seven countries all over the world are Muslims. Whenever a bad thing happens, where do they go? They come to America, or they go to India, to some place so they can destroy it bigger. These Muslims, they get all the girls of all the Christians. They try to convert all of them. After that, they get the babies, and they kill the girls. It was built by the Hindus and destroyed by the Muslims. He was talking about some ancient university in Afghanistan that nobody has cared of. All of these wild statements that he made were delusional and extremely derogatory to Muslims all around the world. As a practicing Muslim, I was deeply hurt when I saw that video of this person making all these statements. If this is what he says in public, in a township council meeting, you can imagine what he is saying to his neighbors, his kids, his friends, in private. Morris County is a beautiful and peaceful place to live. We all, all want to keep it that way.
Thirty seconds, sir.
This is a place where tens of thousands of people from all different faiths, creed, and culture share their traditions and celebrate each other's traditions. It is disheartening to see that this kind of a hate monger is living among us in this beautiful city. I request the Parsippany Township Council to investigate this matter and do all the right things possible to stop this hate from growing and taking root in Parsippany. If required, I'll be glad to share the video with the council members. Thank you. God bless America.
Good evening. My name is Hashir, and I'm a resident of Westwood, New Jersey. I'm here to inform you of a Parsippany resident by the name of Vivek, who in Teaneck went on a three-minute Islamophobic tirade at last month's council meeting. It is unclear what prompted this hate speech against the entire Muslim population. This video has been shared thousands of times, and his tirade has gained national condemnation and attention. The Muslim community is fearful that Parsippany may be home to a nefarious Hindutva element. More on Hindutva later. We request the Township of Parsippany to investigate this issue further, as it is creating safety concerns in the North Jersey community. The Department of Justice and Homeland Security has been informed, and this individual is currently under investigation for possible extremist links. For those who are not aware, a few months ago in Edison, New Jersey, as part of the Indian Independence Day Parade, bulldozers were tumbling down the streets decorated with flowers and pictures of known political criminals who call for the genocide of India's three-hundred-million-plus minorities. The bulldozer is a symbol of illegal demolition and genocide against Christians and Muslims as part of a government procedure to ethnically cleanse three-hundred-million minorities. The Federal Bureau of Investigation, the Department of Justice, and Homeland Security began an immediate investigation into how a neo-Nazi group, all the way from India, was able to peddle influence on U.S. soil. The New York Times reported on this. The Washington Post has been following this issue closely as well. I ask everyone not to confuse Hinduism with Hindutva. I repeat, I ask everyone not to confuse Hinduism with Hindutva. Hinduism is a religion of beauty, openness, and tolerance. Hindutva is a Nazi-inspired political ideology that calls for the extermination of minority faiths, including Christianity, Islam, and others. German good, Nazi bad. Muslim good, ISIS bad. Hinduism good, Hindutva bad. They don't just target Muslims. Christians have been under particularly heinous attacks by Hindutva mobs.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Parsippany is home to thousands of Muslims and Christians. Last month in the U.K., Hindutva mobs, men in ski masks marched on Muslim neighborhoods, pulling scarves off Muslim women and hurling racial slurs at the unsuspecting populace. Could this happen in Parsippany? It isn't far-fetched, especially after Edison, and especially after the Hindutva hate speech we witnessed in Teaneck from a man residing in Parsippany. I wish to inform you that human rights groups are watching Parsippany closely for possible Hindutva activity in the way of hate symbol parading and/or otherwise. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Corbett. Excuse me, I live at one-oh-five Park Road in Parsippany. On February fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, President Biden issued an executive order requiring the use of PLAs for all federal construction projects. Thanks to this town council and mayor, the same failed economic policies of the current Biden administration that continue to cause economic hardship for Americans are coming to Parsippany. Now we can all look forward to even higher taxes. Thank you. This council should be working to make the lives of Parsippany residents better, not more expensive. Thank you, Councilman Musella, for supporting sound economic principles and the taxpayers of Parsippany.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Dukes. I live six-six-one Old Dover Road, Parsippany, Troy Hill. I just want to say again, I support this legislation, PLA legislation, both as a union carpenter and as a resident of Parsippany. I, I like going to work knowing that I'm going to be in a professional, clean work environment, safe. I'm going to give the contractor a full day's work in exchange for a fair wage, and at the end of the day, I'm going to return to my family safe. And project labor agreements being attached to these projects is, is the foundation in which this type of environment exists for tradesmen and women such as myself. Ninety percent of the dollars that I make on these projects remains right here in the community. Obviously, I pay taxes, I support police officers, firefighters, public schools, libraries, et cetera. And as regular consumers, me and my family, we do everything right here in town. We work, I mean, we go to the movies here, we go to restaurants here, we support businesses here, we take our kids out to events here. So like I said, ninety percent of the dollars I make on these projects stays right here in the community. All these things, all these opportunities afforded to me as, you know, the fact that I'm a union carpenter and, a res, a union carpenter and a resident here in Parsippany. All of us are not entrepreneurs, most of us are working-class people, and we just want to make sure, while we do support our business class, we just want to make sure that when these type of economic opportunities present themselves in the community, that the average working person, him or her and his families are going to benefit as well. And attaching project labor agreements to major projects that take place in this community is, is definitely a step in the right direction. And so I support this legislation. I think it's good for both the business class and the bus, and the working class. It's, it's good for the community at whole, and I ask that you, I ask that you all vote yes and pass this legislation. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Gregory Conti. I'm a forty-year member of the Sheet Metal Workers Union in New Jersey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, for hearing us. These project labor agreements do nothing but help the town of Parsippany, the county, and everyone involved. I'll read you some statistics, being that I happen to be privy and have the honor of serving on a governor's task force committee for misclassification and contractors that come into our area from out of state or that are technically in-state right now that are ABC contractors or are not. Majority of them are ABC contractors. I just want to read you some things that are written here, and this is with the Department of Labor, Labor and Statistics. Because of wage differences, non-union construction workers have to rely on public assistance programs at a higher rate because of their low pay and few, if any, benefit protections. Second, this is the result of substantial wage differences as a result of a no-bid requirement for many building projects. Many non-union construction workers earn wages too low to make ends meet and therefore turn to the public safety net to make up the difference. Now, these facts are facts, they're not something thrown against the wall like it had happened here last week. Average hourly earnings dropped seventeen percent with non-union construction. That leaves the importance of the PLAs, that there's a living standard wage for our brothers and sisters here that work with all our members of Local Twenty-Five and the State Council of almost six thousand sheet metal workers. We have employer-provided health insurance declined from fifty-five percent to forty-five percent with the non-union workers. Employment-based retirement plans dropped from thirty-nine percent to twenty-seven percent. Because of these lowest bid requirements, one of the most effective ways to minimize costs and win contracts is to reduce labor costs through whatever means possible, and these means are independent contractors paying workers under the table. That's one. A major issue is non-union construction is paying workers completely off the books.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Under the table. The cost of workers between, this cost of workers between eight-hundred-and-eleven million and over one billion in overtime and premium pay during its study period. It's noted that study is fact. I'm just asked that you approve the PL agreements for our brothers and sisters and keep us making a fair wage, and these monies will be spent back in the town of Parsippany and in the county. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Rich Rivera, Richard Rivera. I am a resident in New Jersey, and I want to speak in support of the project labor
My name is Gregory Conti. I'm a forty-year member of the Sheet Metal Workers Union in New Jersey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, for hearing us. These project labor agreements do nothing but help the town of Parsippany, the county, and everyone involved. I'll read you some statistics, being that I happen to be privy and have the honor of serving on a governor's task force committee for misclassification and contractors that come into our area from out of state or that are technically in-state right now that are ABC contractors or are not. Majority of them are ABC contractors. I just want to read you some things that are written here, and this is with the Department of Labor, Labor and Statistics. Because of wage differences, non-union construction workers have to rely on public assistance programs at a higher rate because of their low pay and few, if any, benefit protections. Second, this is the result of substantial wage differences as a result of a no-bid requirement for many building projects. Many non-union construction workers earn wages too low to make ends meet and therefore turn to the public safety net to make up the difference. Now, these facts are facts. They're not something thrown against the wall like it had happened here last week. Average hourly earnings dropped seventeen percent with non-union construction. That leaves the importance of the PLAs, that there's a living standard wage for our brothers and sisters here that work with all our members of Local 25 and the State Council of almost 6,000 sheet metal workers. We have employer-provided health insurance declined from fifty-five percent to forty-five percent with the non-union workers. Employment-based retirement plans dropped from thirty-nine percent to twenty-seven percent. Because of these lowest bid requirements, one of the most effective ways to minimize costs and win contracts is to reduce labor costs through whatever means possible, and these means are independent contractors paying workers under the table. That's one. A major issue is non-union construction is paying workers completely off the books.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Under the table. The cost of workers between, this cost of workers between eight-hundred-and-eleven million and over one billion in overtime and premium pay during its study period. It's noted that study is fact. I'm just asked that you approve the PL agreements for our brothers and sisters and keep us making a fair wage, and these monies will be spent back in the town of Parsippany and in the county. Thank you very much.
My name is Rich Rivera, Richard Rivera. I am a resident in New Jersey, and I want to speak in support of the project labor agreement, which we call PLA. As a Latino, I'd like to mention that opportunities out there in construction are very, very low when it comes to good wages. It is because of organizations like the carpenters' union and all these other trades that a person like myself was able to come out of an area where people, most people didn't want to live. Today, I live in Cherry Hill, New Jersey. My kids are going to college. I have a beautiful home. Project labor agreements were the cause for a person like myself to gain good wages and good benefits, and I'm able to do the things that I do as a Latino here in New Jersey. I also like to bring up a gentleman right here.
Hey, my name is Ruben. I work for Local 255, and I'd just like to say, you know, I just joined the union, but it's such a big difference coming from a place where you work construction, but you just work check by check, you know? You got no benefits. You just go work, get paid, and that's it. It's a great feeling going to work knowing that, you know, you have the rights, you have good money, you know? I wake up happy, coming home to my babies, knowing that I can support them. And, you know, there's so many Latinos out there working under the table, you know, getting not much money, and I support this because it just helps for everybody. It helps everybody. It helps support families, just waking up with a smile on your face, knowing that, you know, you got another, you know, check that's coming to just, you know, have a good life.
That's all we have to say. Local people, local jobs, PLA stands. Thank you.
My name is Brandon Fishbaum, and I represent the Carpenter Contractor Trust. We advocate on behalf of seven-hundred-and-sixty-three New Jersey carpenters and contractors who are in support of project labor agreements. Last week, I heard a lot of misrepresentation about how PLAs exclude non-union contractors from competing in jobs. This is not true. This can be seen in both a 2017 Berkeley study that shows that PLA projects have a similar number of bidders and a 2011 Cornell report that states that PLA bidding is open and fair and cannot discriminate against non-union contractors. Project labor agreements are just public, single-project agreements that are agreed upon by all parties, the city, the workers, and the contractors. These agreements bring order and transparency to public construction projects. Contractors who say it excludes them from bidding either cannot or choose not to meet the terms set by the PLA. These can include local hiring provisions and measures to ensure a safe job site. The ABC's website claimed that terms in a PLA can be problematic, but those terms are agreed upon, and if they do not agree to the terms, they can choose not to do the job. On certain standards that would be set by this ordinance, all that is required is a good-faith effort to comply. If a contractor can't even make a good-faith effort to comply with a PLA standard, then frankly, they should not get the job. Project labor agreements ensure fair competition because it requires all contractors bidding on the job to play by the same set of transparent rules. Project labor agreements hold contractors accountable to the taxpayer, which leads to a level playing field where more competitive markets and good contractors thrive. Planning and knowing exactly what needs to be done is essential to the industry. The construction industry is no different. This is why New Jersey contractors support project labor agreements. They provide stability and transparent job sites. PLAs eliminate hidden costs, reduce slowdowns, and prevent labor conflicts through mutually agreed-upon terms. We are in a room full of workers who want nothing more than to get to work. All I am asking is for you to let them.
Okay, seeing no one else come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close the public session.
Motion.
Why we got a slow mover here?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ron Meischker. I'm a representative of the Eastern Atlantic State Regional Council of Carpenters. I appreciate the time to be able to speak to you this evening. Appears that the major opposition to this bill is not going to attend this evening after making allegations of harassment or whatever else, which, of course, speaking for the people in this room and all the trades that were there last week, that's a bunch of hogwash. And, you know, when you're not on the right side of the issue and people let you know that you're not on the right side of the issue, to take your ball and go home and claim you were harassed is just when you weren't. It's just nonsense. One thing I wanted to point out this evening when we're talking about project labor agreements as opposed to no project labor agreements. Over in neighboring Pennsylvania, the Glenn O. Hallbaker Company was recently fined twenty million dollars for stealing out of the pensions of workers on prevailing wage projects. Twenty million dollars, okay? This was made possible because you have an employer-managed pension plan, and he was skimming a dollar here, a dollar there for how many years, and it added up to twenty million. And that's, twenty million was the cap because they couldn't go back any further because of statute of limitations. The troubling part about this is that the president of ABC Central Pennsylvania at the time was an executive working for Glenn O. Hallbaker Company. Twenty million dollars, the president of ABC Central Pennsylvania's company, stealing from their workers. I don't even know what to say. There wasn't one call from that organization for that individual to step down. There wasn't one call from any, the national organization, for the company to resign its membership, even when they admitted to stealing the money and taking a twenty-million-dollar settlement. That doesn't happen with project labor agreements and when you have union funds involved and there's checks and balances beyond just the State Department of Labor, okay? The unions police their own, make sure that the benefits are paid to the individuals the way they're supposed to properly be paid. There is no guarantee that that happens if non-union companies are on the job and they manage their own plans. So I repeat, twenty million dollars, okay? If you want to look it up, it was this last year, and, you know, Attorney General Shapiro over there brought the charges forward and announced a twenty-million-dollar settlement. Thank you for your time again this evening, and I thank you for hearing everybody out. And we know you have a difficult decision to make, and we're hopeful that you'll make the right decision for the working-class men and women of your community. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of Parsippany, and my brothers and sisters in the room. First off, I was quoted last meeting that I represented thirty-two electricians.
What's your name, Mike? Name and address.
Mike Pulsinelli, a business agent, Local 10250 Parsippany Road. And I'd like to clear it up for the record. I was quoted, I represent thirty-two electricians, and it's thirty-two-hundred electricians in Local 102IBW, men and women. In the state of New Jersey, there's a hundred-and-fifty-thousand union trades members just in the state of New Jersey. There's hundreds and hundreds of PLAs in the state of New Jersey, from Jersey City to Bayonne to South Jersey to North Jersey. So PLA is nothing new to the state of New Jersey. It's been working for years. All the money goes back into the communities where they're being, you know, executed. I printed out some stuff for tonight because the mayor was attacked about contributions last meeting, and just to be clear for everybody, everybody gets contributions all over the place. And I did a report for Justin, and as you can see, they're in the back of the room, if anybody didn't get it, for the public. He's taken several thousand dollars from the unions. Not only that, there's a picture of him with a Local 102IBW shirt on that he took from our office after he took our checks, after he told us he was for PLAs and he supported the union.
What? What? He took money from us?
Justin is against the PLAs, and he took money from just about every union in this room tonight. Not only that, he's, here's a picture of him wearing a 102IBW shirt. This is a disgrace. A disgrace! Now, speaking of PLAs...
Thirty seconds, sir.
Speaking of PLAs, Parsippany Sewer Plant contractor, Thomas Electric, years ago, did Parsippany Sewer Treatment Plant. The sewage treatment plant caught on fire and almost was out of business, paralyzing Parsippany. Now Parsippany, the town of Parsippany, is suing Thomas Electric for the damages done. That's the taxpayers' money. When there should have been a PLA on it, it would have been done on time. Correct?
Time's up, sir.
Thank you.
No more slow movers, right? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion of the...
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Karivie, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karivie.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Introduction of Ordinance 2022:32. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending ordinance 2019:30, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Hourly Wage Ranges for the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, for 2019 to 2022. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, held on October 18, 2022, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on November 22, 2022, at 7:00 p.m., prevailing time or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper of law." Motion to approve the resolution by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karivie.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2022:33. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing the Township Code to create Chapter 239, entitled "Mandatory Replacement of Lead and Galvanized Service Lines." Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, held on October 18, 2022, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on November 22, 2022, at 7:00 p.m., prevailing time or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karivie.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2022:24. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing the Township Code to create a new chapter, 303, entitled "Project Labor Agreement." The notice for ordinance 2022:24 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, on September 28, 2022, and introduced at the September 20, 2022, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2022:24 be heard in their second and final reading by title only. By myself?
Second. Motion made by Mr. Karivie, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karivie.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for this ordinance and this ordinance only.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Karivie, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Karivie.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
So the floor is now open to the public to speak on the PLA ordinance only. You will have three minutes per person.
Nice to see everybody. Morris County Commissioner here, Tom Mastrongelo. I live at 59 Village Drive, Montville, New Jersey, and I wanted to be here tonight to provide a little information about what Morris County did, what we did as commissioners, and one thing that I believed in, which was project labor agreements at the county for certain projects over five million dollars. The reason why I believe in this, in PLAs, is, number one, you talk about prevailing wage. There are projects in this state where contractors, non-union contractors, are charging prevailing wage, but they're not paying their employees prevailing wage. And what they're able to do is cheat the contractors that are doing the right thing. And as a businessman myself, that's something that I just don't agree with. The other thing is competition. PLAs allow competition for non-union companies to bid as well, and that's something everybody's losing sight of here. Also, what you have to look at is safety, and you look at some of the projects, we had some projects right here in Morris County in East Hanover, the firehouse. A generator fell on two individuals, and safety wasn't installed. Those two people got killed a few years ago. And there was another one up at the castle where another worker got killed because safety wasn't implemented. These people work hard, and they got to be safe. The other thing is, when you look at fiscal conservative approaches to government, Morris County has done it well. We've been one of the top-rated fiscal conservative counties in this nation. We're rated number five in the last few years, at least that was the rating a year ago, and we continue to strive to be one of the top fiscally managed counties in this country. And if you look at, and we're a Republican-operated or managed county, if you look at the legislators, the Republicans in New Jersey who supported the PLA legislation, just about every Republican senator and every Republican Assemblyman supported PLAs for the right reasons, because projects come in on time, projects come in safely, and you don't have to reinvent the the wheel to fix all the mistakes from contractors who aren't doing the right thing. So as, as a county commissioner, as a taxpayer in this county, I support PLAs, I support these workers, and I will stand up here repeatedly to support you in implementing this policy. And I thank you tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kemely Melendez. I am a union worker, and PLAs are important for all union workers. With fair wages and benefits, we get to actually live life and, I'm sorry, a little nervous up here. We get to actually live life instead of just surviving. I live in Morris County and it is always beneficial to hire someone who lives within the county. Those workers know the area, and with them being a union worker, I can assure you that those workers will provide their community with skilled and quarterly labor. The union has benefited my life and, and many lives in this room in more ways than one. And I hope that the talent of Parsippany can see unions as an asset instead of a liability. Local unions belong, and, I'm sorry, local jobs belong in those communities with, where the unions work. Thank you.
My name is Frank Mazetta. I live in Whippenny, New Jersey, and I stand before you as a proud union member, a professionally trained union carpenter. All these people in here, we go through a training process. We are trained extensively in the line of work that we do. We are trained extensively in safety, and we are trained extensively to use the tools that we use every single day. We take pride in what we do. We go home safe to our families. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brendan Kelly. I'm a Morris County resident, a United States Marine Corps veteran, and a second-year apprentice in local 254 carpenters. Been a Morris County resident all my life and plan on staying that way. And hopefully one day, once this job's done, when you say yes to the PLA and get us in here, we're gonna be looking at this job, passing by it every day, and hopefully, once I have kids staying here, I could tell them I built that. And we're all gonna be proud to show what we've built. Thank you.
I live in Parsippany. After listening to the presentations that were made during the public session of last week's council meeting, I don't know how any council member can justify voting in favor of Ordinance 2022:24, which mandates project labor agreements, or PLAs, for Parsippany projects valued at $5 million or more. About 200 union workers traveled from all parts of the state in order to lobby on behalf of the ordinance. On the other side of the issue are Parsippany residents who are not affiliated with the union. Council members should take note that every non-union Parsippany resident that spoke at the meeting was unanimous in their disapproval of the ordinance. I would also like to remind the council members that your primary responsibility is to the residents of Parsippany and not to non-resident union members who are solely looking out for their own monetary interests. In speaking against the ordinance, several Parsippany residents cited results of two studies, which compared the time and cost of PLA projects versus non-PLA projects. Both studies, one of which originated from the New Jersey Department of Labor, were in agreement that the PLA contracts increased the time and cost of projects by about 30%. Union members and the council members who spoke favorably about the ordinance didn't, didn't dispute the results of these studies, but they, you know, more or less implied that the union workmanship is worth that extra premium. While sympathizing with the, while sympathizing with the union workmanship is, um, union members' desire to improve their living standards, Parsippany taxpayers made it very clear that they were unwilling to pay a 30% PLA project surcharge, which calculates to an extra $1.5 million for each $5 million project. What happened to the council members that were dedicated to cutting costs and reducing taxes during the previous administration? What changed between then and now? Make no mistake, approval of this ordinance is equivalent to passing a $1.5 million tax increase for every large construction project in Parsippany. It's also a classic example of pandering to special interests as well as a complete sellout of the taxpayers of Parsippany. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, my name is Mike Lacombe. I'm a local of IBW 102 in Parsippany. I'm a United States Army Combat Veteran Operation Enduring Freedom. I joined the union a year ago. It's been the best thing, one of the best things that's ever happened to me. I had a job previously with a Fortune 100 company. They offshored their marketing to India, they offshored their payroll to Costa Rica, and then they downsized some of us in the field. And I know that when I'm in a union here, the possibility of my job going overseas is nonexistent. My kid, who's two years old, was in the ER three times within the past year. And I know that with my medical through the union, if I didn't have that, it could have been chaos or financial problems that I probably wouldn't have been able to deal with very easily. But I owe a lot to the union, and I'm real happy to be in it. Thank you.
It's finally my height, the microphone. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for inviting us to be here tonight and for all your hard work. And just to say that I, I love Parsippany. It's a great hub of finance and commerce, and it's a beautiful place to live. And I come here every day. The project labor agreement is a win-win. It benefits businesses, workers, and taxpayers. I've been hearing a lot about the costs, how, from the Bureau of Phony Statistics, about the 30% increase and, in cost for a PLA. But it's more organized through a PLA. We have pre-job meetings and, and everything's worked out, and there's schedules. It doesn't, it's not like a fly-by-night schedule, everybody. And also, like the wages, it's, if it's a prevailing wage job, we pay the prevailing, the contractor pays the prevailing wage, it goes to the union workers. The non-union contractor, he'll take the prevailing wage and he can just give his workers $8 an hour or $12 an hour. You bring people from out of state and put like 10 of them in a hotel room and just, you know, that to me is almost like modern-day slavery. So this is like, the PLA is a watchdog for safety and fair wages and it's a protection against theft. And then you have to consider the cost of doing the job over again and how much it costs. You know, when you do a job and it goes bad, it costs twice as much to fix it. So that's something to consider, you know. People in this room who are trained in logistics and organization and staging and know how to run a job, and the job will come in on time. And that's really, that's the real statistic, rather than, you know, everything I've been hearing tonight. I, I heard some pretty outlandish claims, you know. And also to risk a terrible tragedy of somebody getting killed or, or some kind of an injury because you're trying to cut corners. We, we saw that, you know, on, on Route 46 when that wall fell down by Waterview, you know, and somebody could have got killed there. So it's something to think about, and I just wanted to say that. And I want to thank you for all your hard work, and I want to thank my union brothers and sisters for coming out tonight and supporting a better way of life and supporting the American way. Thank you very much.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Hank Heller, and I've been a taxpayer and voter in Parsippany for over 51 years. At the last meeting, I was surprised and perhaps somewhat taken back by the large showing of members of the various unions that attended to show their support for the project labor agreement issue. Tonight, I'm still chagrined because it's fairly clear that this strong showing of union support is meant to perhaps overpower those who might not be in agreement and thereby silence discussion of an issue that is of great importance in this community. Some of the union attendees said that they live in Parsippany. Some of the speakers told of how union membership had saved their lives and allowed them to live lives of greater dignity. I am and was, I was and I am respectful of that. However, the purpose of local government is not to provide better-paying jobs for the public at large, but to make judicious decisions in the use of public funds so that the citizens of Parsippany benefit. When we voted you into office, we expected you to enact laws that would do not damage us. In this terrible time of inflation and possible recession, we're seeing our retirement funds decline by 20 to 30% or more. We are seeing our savings go up in smoke as an irresponsible national government causes us to spend 20 to 35% more to heat our homes, drive our cars to work, and just to put food on the tables for our families. We are being squeezed in every way imaginable, and to have our local government decide to gift union leadership with new laws that preclude small local contractors from beginning, from bidding for large government projects if they are not a union, excuse me, shop, is just wrong. The demands of PLA actually, from all that I have been able to read, cost a taxpayer 25 to 37% more in cost and even more in time to completion. I think that is unconscionable to vote for, for PLAs at this time. Frankly, I might have expected such gifts to come from a Democratic administration, but no, it is a gift to us by our current Republican administration. And additionally, amazingly, almost unanimously. I tell you, if you care at all, you will not be able to defend yourselves from this vote. Those who will look to unseat you in the future, who look to cast aspersions on your decision-making and on your effectiveness, will serve you this meal over and over and over again. I was treated well when I spoke at the last meeting by, by our union guests, but I also learned that not everyone was treated respectfully. In fact, I now know that a few of the people in the audience were threatening to some who dissented. I'm here to say that no matter the size of the opposition, this municipal body has a responsibility to make sure that all people who live in Parsippany and come to speak civilly and express themselves reasonably can be fairly heard and they should not have to worry about email threats, telephone threats, and voice threats.
Time's up.
Thank you very much for your time.
Please, 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 hold it down.
Good evening. My name is Dave Critchley. I'm president of the Morris South County Building Trades, and I'm also third-generation roofer. I say this, I take offense to that. We ain't bullies, we don't beat up people, we're, this is the working class of Morris County right now, whether you believe it or not. And I say this, I say this. Third generation, I didn't go to college. I chose to be in the union trade movement, and I'm damn proud of it. I don't consider it a thug gang or a bunch of bums. So I take offense to that, sir. But I do say this, I'm a proud union member, like I said, third generation, and I'm willing to represent what I would think is a good deal for everyone. I've had, you've all had deals where you've had, this isn't a union, non-union issue. This is the best buck for the taxpayer of this county. So if you just wanna cut corners, and you do, and you get shoddy projects, and usually you ask the union to come in to bail yous out down the road. So I, all I'm saying is, this is a fair thing if the, if the, and I don't say union, non-union. If the same people wanna play and do the same things that we do, training and everything we put into it, then come on board. But to cut the corners and not pay what we pay and the cost of living and the medical is just wrong. We can't compete with that. And I'm a roofer, so I'll tell you, I have a lot of illegals that I have to compete with that they're not getting paid the damn wages they're supposed to be paid for stopping the leaks in the roofs. So when someone tells me it's not a good deal for the taxpayer, I don't think you know what you're talking about. I think you should educate yourself because it's a damn good deal for everybody in this room, whether you're union or non-union. That's it, brothers.
Kenneth Dukes again, 661 Old Dover Road, Parsippany Troy Hill. I'll just add to that by saying that we have this large turnout of union members tonight because they're here to support legislation that they know is gonna greatly serve this community, and also legislation that's gonna greatly serve workers' standards across this entire county. Also, I want to remind the other gentleman that I am a resident here in Parsippany, because he made claims that, you know, the majority of people here are non-residents. I'm a, I'm a resident here in Parsippany, and we have many other members who are residents, some are here and some are not. So I just wanted to state that for the record. Thank you.
Okay, you already spoke, Tom.
He did too.
He was in the last session.
Oh, can I add? Can I take somebody's time?
All right, one minute, one minute.
Thank you, Mike.
You're the last speaker, so we can...
Okay. I just want to add that these, these, the terms and conditions of the PLAs, it's a two-sided discussion to come up with a PLA that serves the taxpayer and serves the workers and serves the contract and serves everybody to get a good project done. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is that we don't want illegals on our jobs. We, we find illegals on our jobs, and that's not something that we, we need to support. And the last thing I want to add is that if a job comes in less and somebody's breaking the prevailing wage laws, we can't turn our heads and ignore that fact. The laws are the laws that have to be enforced, and the prevailing wage has to be enforced whether you're a union or non-union. And if somebody's supposed to get $40 an hour, $50 an hour, they have to be paid. And, and, or, or don't come, and that's how they cheat the system. And that's how the union shops lose projects, and as Dave just said, have to come back in and fix the mess. So that's where my, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, at this time, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for this ordinance.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Karivie, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karivie.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Okay, the floor's closed on this ordinance.
All right, we're gonna have discussion now from council members.
First, let's make a motion and a second, and then we'll have discussion when we do the motion to approve. Who's reading the PLA ordinance, please?
I am.
Okay, continue, and then we'll do a...
All right, whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
So we have a motion by.
Motion by myself.
Second. Second by Mr. Neglia. At this time, council president will have discussion.
Okay, I guess I'll start off. I made a lot of points at our last meeting and why I feel this is a, a good thing. I want to reiterate a couple of things because I spent the last week since our last meeting speaking to a number of residents, okay, that seemed to be receiving misleading information about the PLA. And after I was able to speak with them, some of them for up to 30 minutes per person, they then said, well, that's not the information I was given and that's why they were against the PLA. But after I spoke to them, they said, you know what, this isn't a bad thing. This really isn't a bad thing. Mr. Keller, you got up here and you said that non-union contractors can't bid on these things. They can. Let's put that on the record. Non-union contractors can still bid on these projects. It's been passed out there that they cannot bid and that we're closing out local contractors. Not true. They can bid on it. This in no way, I mean, speaking to residents, oh, this is going to affect small businesses in town. How's it going to affect small businesses in town? It's not going to affect small businesses in town. We're talking, how many projects do we think are going to be over $5 million in this town that the town is going to be doing? I see no way. If anything, I see a lot of workers going into somebody's small businesses and spending their money, like Mr. Duke said. Again, all contractors can bid on these projects. Okay, we talked about, I brought up the prevailing wage law, all right? It's been brought up that if it's union, if the union gets the job, it costs more, okay? Not true. Prevailing wage, I'll use an example as again, $50 an hour. I don't know what the prevailing wage exactly is, but whatever it is, whether you're union or non-union, that's what you get. There is no additional cost for union workers. Well, it's union, if it's $50 an hour, we got to add another 20 an hour for pension and benefits. No. The money gets taken out of your hourly rate, wage, your hard-earned hourly wage. Okay? So you may only get 35 out of that 50. I don't know what that is, but there is no additional cost per, because it's a union worker, for your additional benefits. It gets taken out of your money that you've earned, okay, to cover those things. Guaranteed to have skilled and properly trained workforce, okay? We were given a, Mr. Pusceli started to refer to this thing about the, the water department, how non-union got this job, okay? And it was a fire and now the town's being sued. Okay, so how much money is the town going to have to pay now for this? We have to sue this contractor. How much money are we paying for this? If this was a union job, just my opinion, we wouldn't have had this problem because the work would have been done right. The work would have been done right. Another benefit, projects are completed on time and they are not delayed. Okay? They're completed on time by qualified workers, qualified workers. A percentage of the workers from the union on a PLA job are from Parsippany, our own Parsippany residents. I hope, don't know when one of these projects may come through, but I hope to be driving by and Mr. Dukes, wherever you are, I hope to see you working on that job someday, okay? Since you live here. That study that was done, that study that was done 12, 14 years ago, okay, that keeps being brought up, I'll give you a, an example of that where they're trying to say, because that study's skewed, okay? So if you want to go by square footage of a building, all right, let's just say you're building an Apple store, all right? There's a lot of wiring and a lot of things that have to be done for a, an Apple store compared to if you're building a yoga studio, right, with no equipment in it. Isn't that job going to take longer and it's going to be more expensive to do because there's more technical work that has to be done?
Yes.
Exactly, right? So when it comes to that report, that report's skewed because they're not, they're comparing apples and oranges and they're not giving you the full truth on that thing, okay? So again, you know, I stated a lot of things at the last meeting. I support this, the safety, the liability. Would you want to have one of your family members walking in a building that might have been, you know, things might have been, the corners might have been cut and, and not done right? Okay? I wouldn't want my family members in a building that, you know, who knows if it wasn't built properly, down the road, what could happen in that building, right? So again, I fully support this and thank you very much.
The phone calls that I received over the last several weeks to my home, people that were upset about the, this ordinance, I probably spent maybe a half hour in each one of these conversations to explain to them that first of all, we talk about projects that exceed $5 million, that a lot of the union jobs, there's no cost overruns, they're done right the first time, the, the jobs are described and agreed to in advance, so there are no surprises. Each of these conversations took me a half hour. You guys owe me about four and a half hours of my time to defend, defend this ordinance because that's how much time I spent. Okay, what's my hourly rate?
Prevailing wage.
There seems to be many falsehoods, many statements floating out there about the PLA. So I'm going to try to be clear about it and what I found out and try to speak the facts unlike what some of you may have been told or heard. First, let me explain, a PLA, this PLA only pertains to projects over $5 million that the town of Parsippany bids out. It has absolutely nothing to do with small businesses, private corporations, or the school system. It does not raise your taxes like your hearing out there. Any set, anything said to the contrary is false and wrong. What a PLA does do is level the playing field for the town projects only, projects over $5 million. Currently, I don't believe we have any projects of that magnitude. It puts private entities and unions on the same playing field to bid on projects that are over $5 million, apples to apples. That's fair. What I mean by that is simply they all have to pay prevailing wages and have qualified, trained workers. When a company is forced to pay prevailing wages, they must have workers that are trained in their field, safety trained, properly insured, pay taxes, and be cleared to work in the USA. Also contrary to things slow and out there, as my co-council member, Mr. Karifi, said, all funding for other items comes out of the employees' wages. It doesn't cost the taxpayer anything when it comes to that. Unlike what is also being said, with a PLA, a private company can bid on projects over $5 million, just as a union-based company does. A PLA does not preclude anyone from bidding. It makes sure that they are qualified and pay prevailing wages to the workers and they're all on the same playing field. With a PLA, a private contractor is forced to hire U.S. citizens or those that have the right to work in the USA and pay taxes. A PLA for projects done by the town only forces everyone to have qualified workers doing the job. That's a key word and a key point, qualified workers. Look what happened to the wall at Whole Foods that was mentioned, done by unqualified, non-union workers. It didn't collapse once, it collapsed twice. Safety is an important factor. Qualified workers, whether union or non-union, need to be safety trained. This is part of the process when you have a PLA, qualified workers. Unions train their workers from the ground up with apprentice programs, continuing education, safety training, and much more. So I ask you, wouldn't you want to have a qualified worker that is trained correctly to do a big job, or would you prefer a non-union, non-safety trained individual doing the job that was done three times like the wall at Whole Foods before it was done right? Things like this is what caused the taxpayer more. Things like this is what happened at the sewer plant too. Again, let me emphasize, a PLA does not raise taxes like some of you are being advised. That's an outright falsehood. The PLA only pertains to projects that the town does over $5 million. It does not affect private entities, small businesses, or the school system, and certainly does not tie anyone's hand to use union workers. Everyone in those entities are free to do as they wish and are not affected. Believe me, I'm frugal and want to save money for the taxpayer. I'm a taxpayer too. This ordinance does not hurt anyone nor does it raise taxes. It protects everyone. It protects the town and the taxpayer, contrary to what some of you have been advised. I fully support the PLA agreement and ordinance.
Last week, I felt very strongly about the apprentice program. As been stated tonight, the workers are qualified, they will have proper training. As the young people have come up and said, this has been, when they, when they're in the union, their livelihood is secure. A man last week mentioned that he was able to buy a home and help his mother. Another young man said that he just left the service and he's working in the union. These are things that I feel are important for this town. With the apprentice program, we are going to have our young people who possibly are not ready for college or don't want to go to college, but they will have something to fall back on by being in the apprentice program, learning, being qualified, and getting a proper job and supporting their family, possibly marrying, have children, and taking care of their family, their medical expenses. These are all the things that I think this PLA will do to not only our residents, but are doing for these workers. And I want to thank the service of these two young men that came and participated in our armed forces. Thank you for your service.
After.
Roll call.
I'm going to read my, yeah, thank you. After carefully considering both perspectives of this proposed ordinance, I will vote no on this ordinance in the interest of our overwhelmed taxpayers and small business leaders. I do not hold an anti-union position. In fact, like most of you in the audience tonight, many of my family members are hardworking, talented, and skilled union members. However, I have a financial responsibility to the taxpayer of this town and from the beginning, tried in vain to get a thorough understanding of why Parsippany had to be the first in town, first town in Morris County to do this, but the administration provided no answers or supporting evidence for this. On multiple occasions, I provided independent and careful studies to the administration and my colleagues about how project labor agreements drive up costs, harm small businesses, and are anti-competitive. At our previous council meeting, we heard from already struggling taxpaying residents who felt this measure wasn't worth the paper it was written on. At the same meeting, I asked for a study to be done on the impact of the proposed Lake Hiawatha Library, but again was ignored. I even proposed improvements to the measure that would have been a win-win for all sides, but was met with silence. My refinements, as a part of my fiduciary responsibility to this township as a whole, not just to one specific group, were entirely ignored by this administration. I made an oath from day one to fight to keep Parsippany affordable and enable residents to stay here and not flee our town. With that said, I see no compelling reason to depart from our competitive bidding process that brings benefits to our taxpayers as it stands today.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, before I read my statement, I want to, anybody here know what a keyboard warrior is? Well, I'll explain to you what a keyboard warrior is. It's those people that go on and they continue to put letters to the editor out, who are guided by individuals to get their point across because, you know, they're pretty much cowards to go do it themselves. I do respect Mr. Heller, Mr. Corbett, and Mr. Vinizia, who actually come up here to state their concerns on this ordinance. I have a lot of respect for individuals like that and I applaud you for that because that's what the process is all about. Now, with that being said, I'm going to go all the way back to the Tap into Parsippany editorial with Samantha Delamedia, who comes and puts false information. And if you notice, all the emails we get are very generic, very similar to what the statements that the councilman, Ms. Selah made. They're all the same. Every single one's the same, the 30%, the 2008 study, by the way, all the same. And that kind of makes you kind of think, hey, wait a minute, is, are these individuals making their own minds up or they're being fed information? In fact, one of the, one of the individuals said, oh, I was told you took all this money contributions, excuse me, from the unions. Well, I had Team Barbario, so whatever I took, 33% went to me, 33% went to Councilman Neglia, and 33% went to Councilman Justin Mocella. So that's how it works when you have a team. It doesn't mean it just came to me, but nobody denied it, nobody, nobody gave it back, everybody was fine. Why? Because when you contribute to me, only thing I can guarantee you is good government. That's all you get, is good government. Then I received a, I saw the letter to the editor today from a Parsippany Republican, I'm not going to call out to that, but I see him in the audience, a Parsippany Republican committee member saying that, how can Republicans support unions? Let me tell you something about a man that I know, a man who I loved, a man who worked his hand to his bone, a man that lost a son to a brain tumor at the age of 10, a man that taught me everything about faith, family, and hard work, just by his mere example to be my father, and he was in a union.
Yeah.
And I will say, I thought you said you did give me information to look over, and you know what, I wasn't going to waste the time because it was a way out, that's what all it was. It was, was to reduce it. But I don't see any Republicans who called me out tonight that when the freeholders, excuse me, the commissioners did it, nobody lined up and went to the commissioners. It just happens to be here in Parsippany for some reason, which I can't figure out. I'm, I'm sorry, council, council president, but I have, I have to get a lot off my mind because when I read those editorials, I know where they're coming from. It gets very frustrating. And I saw a statement today with regards to the president and CEO who gets paid, paid by the ABC, with regards, there was no decorum in the meeting last week. And she called me out and I know she was calling out Councilman Karifi, but it was okay for her to send out information that maybe Mr. Karifi is prejudiced or he's biased or he doesn't like other minorities. But that's okay to do that. When you can't get your point across, what do you do? You go to the negative. Last week, we heard plenty of testimony from union workers from all, all walks of life who described how training, wages, and benefits offered through union employment allowed them to pull themselves up by their bootstraps, build lives and raise families. Before I continue, last week, I saw many members in here that I went to high school with here, at this time, one's over here right now that live in Parsippany. We went to Parsippany Hills High School, myself, we got Frank Neglia here, Paul Karifi, and Colette Madine. We all went to this high school. We're Parsippany bred, we love Parsippany. So when anybody tells you we're not doing the right thing, we're doing what feels best for the township. Here's the other thing, there's also a levy, a levy of misleading statements and editorials which I discussed before regarding our proposed PLA ordinance from those who wouldn't know a slotted screwdriver from a Phillips head, suggesting they simply know better than hard working men and women. men and women who would staff these projects. Unfortunately, the ordinance described by these individuals bears little resemblance to the one that is actually before the council tonight. The bottom line is PLA's promote the public interest, not special interest, by securing the best possible work for the taxpayers' money, along with quality jobs for Parsippany residents through fair and open bidding. And I'm saying that for a reason. I don't know if anybody up here is a qualified purchasing agent, probably not, or understands the procurement process, but there's a process. You just don't give jobs out, you have to bid on them. That's the state law. Given all that Parsippany stands to gain from PLA ordinance, I feel compelled to correct the record, which I'm doing here tonight. The State Employment and Training Commission has observed that unions often provide the best training, and, you know what, in some cases, the only training. For entrance to the construction plant, to this end, the PLA ordinance requires that all apprentices on the project shall be Parsippany residents, and that 20% of the project total labor hours shall be performed at Parsippany's apprentices. The PLA ordinance also contains several provisions aimed at increasing job and apprenticeship opportunities for minorities and women. I want to emphasize that, minorities and women, because that's what Councilman Karifi was being accused of, and one of the bullet points that I happened to read with regards to the ABC. Some have characterized the PLA ordinance as a direct infringement on workers' rights to decline union representation and fundamental violation of their civil rights to make a living. Others claim the ordinance runs contrary to the values of free enterprise, as you heard here tonight, free competition, and fiscal conservatism. Well, jeez, I never knew that conservative, if you're conservative, you don't back unions or you back non-unions. I'm a conservative. There's a difference between a conservative, fiscally responsible conservative. When I'm told I'm not, I will fight to the end for that. In no uncertain terms, the United States Supreme Court has disagreed with this assessment. Just as a private entity may select a contractor on a free market based upon the contractor's willingness to enter into a pre-hire agreement, the court ruled that a municipality may do the same with a PLA. The truth is, and this is the Supreme Court, the truth is, both union and non-union contractors are free to bid on projects covered by PLA's or as participants on a free market. They may choose to bid on projects not covered by PLA's. Instead, besides, there is no evidence that PLA's invariably increase construction costs. Now, let's get up to date a little bit more on our studies. A 2017 study concerning the construction of community college projects in California, for example, found that PLA's neither reduced the number of bidders nor raised the cost. In fact, one segment of the study saw that PLA projects received slightly more bidders. Everybody knows I grew up in this town, I was at the Empire Diner the other day, I eat there a lot, so if you want to meet me, that's where I am. A contractor came up to me, a non-union contractor, came up to me and said to me, hey, Mayor, you're doing a good job. I've been on PLA's all the time. He goes, and if we win the bid, we follow the rules and regulations. When I, he came out and said it, we're not forbidden to bid on them. If I want the project, I'm gonna bid on it. And he's bid on them in Jersey City, and I think he's got those bids as well. So anyway, I'm gonna close it out with this. There's a well-worn saying among carpenters, measure twice, cut once. The PLA ordinance will ensure that township receives quality work by trained individuals on our most important public work projects, and in the long run, Parsippany will reap the benefits of lower repair costs, thanks to a job well done the first time, as well as the immeasurable benefits of a trained, resilient workforce that can raise families and build lives here. To me, that is an investment worth making. In closing, this administration, as you see, I was just previously saying, I ignored Councilman Sella, which is not a fact, I did not ignore him whatsoever, I just didn't agree with him. So when you don't agree with somebody, you think you're ignoring them, which is not the case. This administration, going forward, will always work hard for the residents of Parsippany. Like I said before, I respect those individuals that don't hide behind a keyboard, that actually come out and voice their opinions, and that's why I have great respect for the three individuals that came up here today. That's all I have to say. Thank you, and I thank the council and friends for giving me time to speak.
I just want to add one more thing, and the mayor brought it up. If you weren't at our last meeting, this woman, Mrs. Delamedia from the ABC, she sent us all an email where she attacked me, and a comment that I made about undocumented workers. Undocumented. You're all documented, you pay taxes. Undocumented illegals do not pay taxes. So we, Parsippany, New Jersey, Morris County, are losing money because those people aren't paying taxes, okay? I said undocumented workers. She went there and said the color of a person's skin, okay? I said at the last meeting, I never once referred to a person's skin, and in her comment, she refers to the unions as white, pale male. That's all they hire. Again, I said it at the last meeting, I'll say it again, I'm looking outside, I'm looking around the room here, I see all races, I see all colors, I see men, I see women, okay? So don't even go there. Okay? Thank you.
Counsel, counsel president, I would like to read something to the record, and I think this is very important, because it's a study that was done by the Associated Builders and Contractors. It was an article by BizNow, article of October 6, 2022. It's called Practical Approach: Help Experienced Brands Navigate the Labor and Material Shortage. According to a February 2022 study by the Associated Builders and Contractors, the construction industry will need to hire 650,000 workers to stay on pace with the demand this year. This puts foremen and other higher-ups in a difficult position. Wonder if they should consider less experienced labors, this is the study, less experienced labors, to meet the demand, which would increase the risk on the construction site. That's their study, not mine.
Okay, all council members are done? Roll call, please.
Okay, motion to approve the resolution by myself?
Yeah, we have a motion by Mr. Karifi, a second by Mr. Neglia. I'm gonna go ahead and give one to roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Sella?
No.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes. You can sit and listen to us, or we'll take a five-minute recess, and you can quietly leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
He's not doing it.
Must be near that.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't see him.
I see Nancy, she's sitting. She's gonna start getting up now.
Yeah, I see him. I would've thought he would've found...
I don't know.
Maybe she left. She was tired, her leg was bothering.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Long day.
Yeah, looked beautiful though.
We started at seven o'clock this morning.
It looked absolutely beautiful, it really did.
Hey, Rick. I've drawn over this, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's a nice...
Hi, John. How are you?
Huh?
Oh, you're very welcome.
It's nice high school.
Keep up the guitar.
You have two high schools.
Yeah, of course I do.
Two. Here, when I went, it was like, I think about...
Do do that. Take care, John. Bye-bye. Take care.
This is Parsippany Hills, and then there's Parsippany Heights.
I can't hear you.
The hills.
Yeah. As last week. Yep, as last week. I agree.
That was working, and this one's working, that one wasn't.
That one, we had a problem with this one.
It's on now.
Is it?
This one's fine.
I'll turn it off for now, just save battery during the break, and then when it goes back on, I'll turn it back on.
Where do you turn it on?
So, we're gonna, I'll come back up and help you. We're just gonna hold it high, we'll try, it'll be hard to get to.
All right.
Hi.
I'll be back. We're down to make sure.
How are you?
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
You're welcome.
I still don't see Dee.
No, she must've left. No, I looked for her before. I was looking her, I was looking for her in the bleachers, and I didn't see her.
Mike, how we doing with the ambulance thing?
Good. I got Wade working on that, so we're gonna get it figured out.
Good, good.
Yes, what about Mount Tabor? What has he done about Mount Tabor?
Oh, what about Mount Tabor? Since the state requires that we take over the responsibility.
Hi, we just finished the PLA, and now we have to do the rest of our meeting.
I go back that far.
We have a five-minute recess, and now we've got the rest of the meeting, which is, we've gotta read all of our...
Nothing in Mount Tabor conforms to any state standards.
Okay.
Not roads, not sewers.
Yeah, what do you call it, the Yankees won? Okay, and how are the, how's the other team doing now?
Not storm drains, nothing.
Oh, what do you mean?
In fact, the residents in Mount Tabor don't even own the property, the houses are built on.
Okay, we'll do, all right. Bye-bye.
Ocean Grove in Parsippany, look, do this, Google Ocean Grove and Mount Tabor.
Oh, Ocean Grove is...
Both of those...
Right, Camp Meeting, yes, yes, Ocean Grove, definitely, yes. Mike, there's Dee. There she is. There she is.
Oh, there she is.
Yeah, yeah. I was looking for a white jacket.
Those are the towns the state said, we will take over responsibility for that.
They didn't do that in Ocean Grove.
I thought they did.
So we have nothing in the township, and the state came down and said, no.
Oh, yesterday, yesterday?
I'm just saying.
There's nothing in writing, you mean nothing in writing?
As I was taught, if there ain't in writing, it couldn't be...
I'm gonna Google, Google it, because there's gotta be, there's gotta be a record someplace.
Yeah, but I checked with John.
As, as, no. As a matter of fact, let's go back to the Camp Meeting Association officers, and some of them might have some records.
I talked to Joe O'Heal about it, so I'm asking to see if they have anything, because that would benefit them, too. Because that, if they was on the Bay, would be...
Absolutely. Dolores?
I think I can invoke my presidential authority here and get everybody back on a podium. Maybe. Council members and mayor.
Just hit the old hammer there.
I got the light on.
Mike, your wife is talking to you. At least 20 minutes, 15, 20 minutes at least.
You wanna wait or go home?
No, why don't you wait, it's getting dark. Wait, go sit down, we'll be finished in a little while. Come on, council members, let's go.
George is here? Okay, why is George here?
Can we get back to the dais, please?
Can we get everybody back up here so we can complete the meeting?
All right, who's up?
I'll entertain a motion to reconvene.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Sella, roll call, Mr. Karifi. Ms. Grignani, Mr. Sella. Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Okay, back in session. You're on.
Ordinance 2022, somebody called a 25, an ordinance of Parsippany, of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, amending Chapter 405, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 23, Stop Intersections of the Code of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey. The notice for ordinance 2022, somebody called 25, was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper, the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on September 28, 2022, and introduced at the September 20, 2022 regular meeting. Motion to accept. Ordinance 2022, somebody called 25, be heard in their second and final reading by title only by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Sella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Or is open, seeing no one?
Motion to close public hearing for ordinance 2022, somebody called 25, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. Karifi. Ms. Grignani? Mr. Sella?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero. Whereas the above ordinance is read in title on second reading and hearing held hereon, now therefore be it...
Just hit the old hammer there.
I got the light on. Test one, two.
Yes, D. Mike, your wife is talking to you. At least twenty minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes at least.
You wanna wait or go home?
No, why don't you wait? It's getting dark. Wait, go sit down. We'll be finished in a little while. Yeah, exactly. Come on, council members. Let's go.
Hey! Get back here.
George is here? Okay, why is George here? What? Yeah.
Hello. Can we get back to the dais, please?
Can we get everybody back up here so we can complete the meeting?
Take care.
Good night.
Ordinance.
All right, who's up?
I'll entertain a motion to reconvene.
Motion made by Mr. Karipi, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Karipi. Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay. Back in session. They're on.
Ordinance 2022, somebody called 25. An ordinance of Parsippany of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills amending Chapter 405, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 23, Stop Intersections of the Code of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey. The notice for ordinance 2022, somebody called 25, was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on September 28, 2022, and introduced at the September 20, 2022, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2022, somebody called 25, be heard in their second and final reading by title only by myself. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karipi. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes. Public hearing, motion open the public hearing for ordinance 2022, somebody called 25, by myself. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karipi. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Yes.
Floor is open, seeing no one?
Motion to close public hearing for ordinance 2022, somebody called 25, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani? Mr. Musella?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held hereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2022, somebody called 25, by myself. Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani? Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Ordinance 2022:26, an ordinance establishing white-collar salary range. The notice for ordinance 2022:26 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on October 4, 2022, and introduced at the September 20, 2022, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2022:26 be heard in their second and final reading by title only by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2022:26 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Floor is open to the public, seeing no one?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that notice of the final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2022:26 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2022:28, bond ordinance providing for various improvements in the purchase of various equipment for the Gulf Utility and Attache of Persippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, State of New Jersey appropriating $1,117,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,117,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. The notice for ordinance 2022:28 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper attached to Persippany Troy Hills, on September 28, 2022, and introduced at September 20, 22, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2022:28 be heard in their second and final reading by title only by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karipi, seconded by Mr. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to open up the public hearing for this ordinance, this ordinance only.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karipi, seconded by Mr. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
See no one come forward, make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion made by Mr. Karipi, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karipi, seconded by Mr. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2022:29, bond ordinance providing for various sewer utility capital improvements in and by the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, State of New Jersey appropriating $5.94 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $5.94 million in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. The notice for ordinance 2022:29 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on September 28, 2022, and introduced at the September 20, 2022, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2022:29 be heard in their second and final reading by title only. Make a motion by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Karipi. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2022:29, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Karipi. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Floor is open, seeing no one? Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2022:29, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Karipi. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2022:29, made by myself, seconded by...
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Karipi. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2022:30, bond ordinance providing for various 2022 capital acquisitions and improvements by and in the Township of Persippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, State of New Jersey appropriating $8,105,000 and authorizing issuance of $7,718,200 in bonds or notes of the Township to finance part of the cost thereof. The notice for ordinance 2022:30 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Persippany, on September 28, 2022, and introduced at the September 20, 2022, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2022:30 be heard in their second and final reading by title only by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public hearing, motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2022:30 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Floor is open, seeing no one?
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2022:30 by myself.
Second.
Who's seconded that?
Me. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereof, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2022:30 by myself.
Seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022:31, bond ordinance providing for various water utility capital improvements in and by the Township of Persippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, State of New Jersey appropriating $5,170,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $5,170,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. The notice for ordinance 2022:31 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Persippany Troy Hills, on September 28, 2022, and introduced at the September 20, 2022, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2022:31 be heard in their second and final reading by title only by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2022:31 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Floor is open, seeing no one?
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2022:31 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2022:31 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani? Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Non-consent agenda resolutions, Resolution 2022-145, corrective action plan for 2021 audit. Motion to approve the resolution by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karipi, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Motion passes. R2022-146, approved corrective action plan, 2021 municipal audit. Motion to approve the resolution above by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Karipi. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
R22-147, Township Council Certification of the Annual Audit. Motion to approve the resolution above by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karipi.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution 2022-148, authorizing Township officials to undertake certain actions in connection with the issuance and sale